Okay, Ms. Myrtle, would you please leave us in prayer?
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we all thank you for this day. And Lord, we just thank you for all the blessings that you give us each day. And just forgive us of our sins. And we just thank you so much for your son that died on the cross for. And we ask those blessings in thy name, amen.
Amen. Lord, we may stand and say, "Pleasure to lead your allegiance." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you have a cell phone, please mute or turn them off for the duration of the meeting. And we will be really appreciative. All right. And that includes mine. All right. All right. We're going to call this meeting to order. Lucy, would you please call and roll?
Myrtle, Eugene.
Here.
Brenda.
Here.
John.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Mayor Seth.
Here. All right. I must have given you two copies of the agenda. Yeah, sorry. I think I found one.
Do you think you can pray?
I got one. All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to our monthly council meeting. Everybody got a face mask on? All right. Let's go ahead and cover the minutes from the January 12th of 2021 council meeting.
Mayor Seth called to order the regular meeting of the council at seven AM on January the 12th, 2021. The roll call was had. The following persons were present. Mayor Seth, Arthur Seth, Councilors Myrtle Van Cleet, Eugene Howey, John King, and Steve Brewer. Brenda Low was asked. The minutes from the December regular meeting were read. Eugene Howey made motion to accept as read, seconded by Steve Brewer. Motion carried. The financials for December were given. John King made the motion to accept them as given. Eugene Howey seconded. Motion carried. Oh business, Mayor Seth noted that he will give Commissioner Washburn about the road work needed on Copper Hill Road. The town is busy and still in progress. The budget for 2021 is awaiting the results of the call. The clerk is waiting for a callback from our bum power concerning the LED streetlight upgrade. This work is to begin sometime in January. We will remind him that it is time to submit the annual ethics statement of economic interest for calendar year 2020. This must be completed by April 2021. At the urging of Commissioner Knight, Joe Knight's office, a reimbursement request was submitted to Jefferson County to purchase seven laptops and a video streaming system for a sum of $19,767.26. These laptops were distributed to the clerk and council members at the meeting. Mayor Seth explained the programs on the laptops also that each one has its own email address. The streaming system will be used to record and broadcast council meetings live via Facebook or YouTube and/or YouTube. This equipment has been ordered. We're waiting on an ETA for delivery. The clerk has been able to purchase additional cleaning supplies and personal protection equipment with the COVID-19 relief fund through Jefferson County. The presentation of the new mobile home ordinance and nuisance ordinance have been delayed due to the need for an update of the zoning terminology used. Mr. and Mrs. Gary Morrison attended this meeting and requested that the town and its district partners would begin the part of the company to do. Their D and whatnot. The clerk agreed to take this paperwork to the town lawyer to get the process started. A motion to adjourn was made by Myrtle Van Cleet and seconded by John King. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Respectfully submitted. Lucy, now report.
All right. Any questions, comments, or corrections to the minutes is read.
Make a motion and we accept it as read.
All right. Eugene made the motion to accept as read.
I'll second the motion.
And Brenda is seconded. All in paper. All right. Motion carried. Okay. Next up, financial reports. All right. Let's start off with the general fund. Our beginning balance was $29,484.18. And our cleared balance was $21,499.08. All right. And next, moving Block County forward. Our beginning balance, $23,235.14. And the cleared balance is $23,762.57. Next, our 2 and 7 road account. Beginning balance is $11,573.94. Our cleared balance is $11,337.88. Okay. Next up is rebuild Alabama diesel tax. Beginning balance, $2,775.94. And our cleared balance is $3,062.84. Okay. Read up rebuild Alabama gas tax. Beginning balance, $8,844.65. Our cleared balance is $9,646.25. And the 4506 road account. Beginning balance is $11,899.53. And our cleared balance is $12,045.21. And the last one is the capital improvement fund. Our beginning and ending balance was $14,909.17. Any questions, comments, or corrections to the financial reports is read.
I make a motion that we accept them as read.
All right. Brenda's made a motion to accept as read.
I'll second it.
And Steve is seconded. All in paper. All right. Motion carried. All right. No standing committees, special committees, or enforcement officers going into whole business. As taught to Steve just prior to the meeting. And I have yet to call. I have not called Commissioner Washburn. We're going to get it done this week, this month. And I think I'm more delegated. Because I just seem to have a middle block about calling him. And we'll talk to him about the Copper Hill and Smith Mill. And we need to get together and formalize a plan for at least those two areas. And see what we can get done with what we have available. Okay. Has Lucy, the gentleman back here, was trying to move a home park back here?
Mr. Lightman.
Has he been, gotten in touch with you about the material for the road? He said if we would buy the material, he would spread it?
He hasn't. He hasn't said anything recently to me about it.
And then probably reach out to him again, see if he still wants to stand by that order and for that offer.
I'm sure he would. I'm sure he would. He was very emphatic about it.
Yeah. Yeah, we might touch back with Commissioner Washburn when we talk to him. Find out where they get their supplies from, what state contract. And whether they use a state contract or have a contract of their own. And we might be able to buy some material free.
And what that made, the red rock?
No. Well, red rock was left over from the walking track.
Okay.
That wasn't, that was never intended to be a paving or a road top or surface. But that's what was used because there's a big pile of it out there for a while. And that's not a reason it was used on the roads. But anyway, we'll get on to that. All right. Street lights were, as I was, let me get back in order here. Any word on the audit?
No, sir. No, sir.
They've got, they've collected everything they need.
They're in the process of doing those. They have to send a letter to the lawyer to make sure we have no, nothing against us out. And then, you know, I forget what all, they had to, they had some letters they had to send out. And then he said it takes a couple of weeks to get that back. Maybe next week we'll hear.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to check up on that.
I'll be talking to him this week, you know.
All right. Okay. Next under old business is also another reminder. If you have not already submitted your statement of economic interest to the State Ethics Board, we have until the end of, the last day of April to get it submitted.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me for interrupting, but they're all done.
They're all done. Well, I can, I can take this off my list then.
Yes, sir.
Very good. The live streaming equipment has been received. It came in last week. And I anticipate that it will be installed and ready for use at the next meeting if everything goes right. Then we're going to come in and install the cameras, run some wire, and just get it installed. And we'll be up and running next, next month. It's, well, I think it's a neat system, but that's, that's me. I'm a geek when it comes to electronics. All right. All I had under old business. Under new business, first off, I sent, since you didn't have your email. We received a solicitation from the Alabama League of Municipalities for a debris removal plan that they're putting together and wanting the towns and municipalities throughout the state to participate in. And it sounds like it's a good deal, except that they base it on square mileage. But there's a minimum payment, and it's $1,500 a year. And what this is, is basically it goes, whatever money the municipalities pay into this fund, goes into a fund. And anytime there is a federally declared disaster, half of the deposited money is made available for a prorated share to go out to those that suffered any damages. This is to cover damages that were not covered by a federal cleanup grant. Anyway, I gave everybody a copy of the brochure that they sent out with the memorandum, a memorandum of understanding to participate in this program. And I thought it was, I personally thought the amount was too high for our square mileage. I understand that you have to have a minimum, but that penalizes the smallest communities. Is it something like? I think they actually made reference to the amount per square mile. Well, maybe not in this pamphlet, but.
This is legal, right here. It tells you.
Yeah, they want.
97 square miles.
.97 square miles.
If we are a tier one, we are considered a tier one.
Yeah. So I have municipality. Let me see. Anyway, I'm not particularly fond of the, of this plan, but that's my.
Well, we, we've already signed agreements with Jefferson County and Block, didn't we?
Yeah. Well, for removal at a set price for a contracted price for debris removal. But we would, we would have to pay for it. Or, you know, the federal government will pay for some. But we would live, we would be held accountable for a portion of it. But, like I said, I'm not particularly fond of it. But I went to give y'all an opportunity to read through this. I sent an email to everybody on this. Let's see if I, it had the cover letter from the League of Municipalities. See. Anyway, the same copy of the memorandum of understanding for this program. And tier one is $100 per square mile and a minimum of $1,500.
Jesus, that's, that's expensive, isn't it?
Yeah. And for a, well, for a tier one non-member, it's $300, $300 per square mile with a minimum of $3,000. Tier two and three members is 300 square mile with a minimum of $3,000. But still, $100 per square mile. You know, we'd have to have 15 square miles to not pay the minimum. And like I said, that's, I thought it was penalizing the small communities. But I'm going to leave it up to the council on this. We don't have to act or do anything with it tonight so that you can have an opportunity to read and read the emails that are sent to you. It has the cover letters and the memorandum of understanding they want us to sign to participate in this program. So we'll present it to you tonight, and we'll bring it up next meeting and make a decision on it then. Okay. Our next item I have under new business is our website name and our protection, site protection package is coming up for renewal. I think it expires in April. Our domain for renewing it for three years is a total price of $344.58. Of that, $92.94 is for the domain name. You have to pay for your domain name. So that's mykindofline.org for the next three years for $92.94. But the protection package is $251.64 for the next three years. That is doing backup of the website and all material on it and virus and malware removal service. We have been hit by that before. As well, put this in place several years ago. But it's, it's worth it. So I guess I just need to get approval from the council to extend this, to continue using the domain, the name, name of mykindofline.org for the next three years along with the protection package.
That's for $99. $99?
$92.94 for the name. But it's $251.64 for the protection package. That's the backups and malware, virus protection, but also removal. If it becomes infected. And it's a total of $344.58 for three years.
I make a motion to get it for three more years. I'll second it.
All right. Motion made by Steve, seconded by John to extend the package for three additional years. All in paper. All right. Motion carried. All right. I'll go ahead and get that started. Like I said, it expires in April, but I wanted to go ahead and get it brought up this month. So we get it, get it going.
It won't be held Russell. It won't be held Russell.
Yeah.
Can you get it for a longer term than three years at a discount?
I priced it for a longer period, and there's no real price saving for the name and the protection service for additional years. I did price it for five, but the year, per year cost is the same.
We, when we had our border business, we, years ago, we did it for 10 years because it was going to cost us just about half of what it was for three years.
Yeah. I've never priced it for 10 years. Our, our server, our website itself, the housing of the website, it doesn't come up for renewal for another couple of years, I think.
That's fine. I was just wondering if, you know, the possibility to go to longer term with the.
I'll research it again. I'll research it again, but for these particular items, there wasn't a real savings available. And the yearly cost was the same. Now, can the price go up before we renew again? Probably. And that would be, that would be a.
That's why I was looking at a 10-year, you know, contract because that happened to us. And it went up significantly. And so I checked into it and found out we could get it for a 10-year contract rather than three at that, with a company and had significant savings. But that may be a thing of the past because we've been out of business now 10 years.
All right. I will, I'll investigate that when I go to renew. And if there's a significant savings for extended period, I'll come back to the council before executing that.
Has it gone up from the last time? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I'd have to go back and, and see what, what it, what it was last time.
If it does go up every year, it might be good to go ahead and do a 10-year and lock in that price.
Yeah. I don't think the price has gone up. It's been pretty steady. Names fluctuate quite a bit.
Right.
But services don't.
Malware don't, it, it pretty much stays the same price every year?
Yeah, it has been. It has been.
Yeah, I guess there's a lot of competition for that, so they're not really going.
Right. Well, they, like I said, the names, the price for a name fluctuates.
Right.
Depending on what the, the last three, or the dot, whatever, dot com, dot org, dot. Depending on what that is, the price could triple. And, you know, there's some names out there that they want thousands of dollars for. And, you know, there's some names out there that they want thousands of dollars for. And, uh, I did, you know, as far as that goes, I did check on the US government issues a dot gov, uh, domain name. But it's, uh, the name registration is two hundred and fifty dollars a year. And they just went up from a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty. So that's, that's why I originally went to Brazil dot org way back when. So, anyway, all right, I'll check into that and see, uh, see if it would be any of the great savings to get the extended contract. Because, uh, this, it'll be around for a long time, anyway, so... All right, uh, next item on new business. Uh, I had asked that, uh, Jason from Alliance Electric, Electrical Contractors, to come down here and check the ground on the, uh, the electrical system in the building. Because with the recording equipment, I get a lot of harm and it's indicative of bad ground. Well, Jason came out and looked at it and it's a bad ground. We don't have one. There is no ground to the electrical box, none. So that's a, that's a hazard in and of it, so, so we have to get that fixed. But while he was here, we also asked him about LED lights in here instead of these fluorescents. And, uh, he gave us the, uh, quote on replacing all the lights in here with LEDs, uh, fixing the ground and fixing our light out front. This shines on the building, it's supposed to shine on the building at night, uh, with a electric eye where it comes on automatically and goes off automatically. So his estimate is for, uh, uh, twelve LED, uh, flat panels, uh, they're two by fours, uh, and I guess there's, there's six fixtures to this, uh... Anyway.
He plodded those lights out, Mayor. He plodded them out in here and showed me where we actually needed more lighting because we've got dark corners.
Yeah, well, that's true.
And he said, you know, that it...
Those additional lights?
It's not gonna cost you. He's got a good price on these lights. He bought a bunch of them for a job investment. I think for the city of Esmer, and so he said, considering that price, you, it would really be, uh, be to your advantage to go ahead and...
Write it up in here. Well, yeah, we have to look at keeping the building in good shape until we, if we're otherwise, uh, and I think it's a good idea to do this, uh... Anyway, the LED lights that's in here in the office, uh, throughout the interior, uh, the sign light with an LED floodlight, fixing the, uh, ground, the, uh, panel and replacing all this, uh, uh, receptacles in the main room here. Because they're all...
Some of them don't even have covers.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're just hanging.
Anyway, uh, all that, um... Uh, the total price is, uh, two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
For the lights and everything?
Yeah, for everything, all the work.
Sounds like a good price to me.
I said twenty-five hundred is what I was thinking.
I'm gonna motion that we get it done.
Okay, we've got, uh, Brenna has made the motion to, uh, proceed with the repairs.
I'll second it.
And Eugene is seconding. All in favor? All right, motion carried. Okay. We call, uh, Jason and, uh, ask him to get his material together and let's get going on it. All right, next item, uh, I did have a lengthy agenda tonight, by the way. All right, uh, at our last meeting, uh, we had a request to annex some property on Copperzil. And the information was provided to the attorney. Uh, he's got the initial paperwork done that the owner, the landowners have to sign. And once that is completed, he can do the ordinance that we can address and, uh, pass. We'll schedule that to, for the next meeting. But as soon as he gets the, uh, paperwork to us, we'll have to contact the landowners, have them sign the papers. And then we can provide them to the attorney, pardon me.
Is that the property right past Sue's trailer park up there? That, on the right going into Copperzil?
Uh, I think that property is further down across from the Buboes, wasn't it?
It's not quite that far. It's, uh, I think it's right in the curve, in his curve. They're just, just past...
I think it's just past Sue's.
Yeah.
Trailer park. Mr. Mayor, am I supposed to pick up that paperwork from the attorney's office?
No, I'll probably be able to email it and just print it out and have them sign it. And then we'll have to get it back to the attorney.
I spoke with Ms. Morrison today and she says, I get it, just call her. And they'll get up here.
Okay. Now, that's, uh, I talked to the attorney this afternoon. And he said, uh, he, he's got that ready for them to sign.
Okay.
And then we'll proceed on that, uh, proceed with that next meeting. All right, uh, other item of new business, uh, a month or so ago, we issued a building permit for, uh, some construction there in Green Acres. Uh, and I was contacted about that saying that it was in violation of the Green Acres covenant. And as a town, the town has no say in the enforcement of the covenants. That is up to the, uh, builder and/or the residents of that subdivision. So the only concern of the town is the building permit and the building code. As long as it's in, in, uh, in accordance with the code, then we have no problem with it. But it is not the town's responsibility to enforce covenants in a subdivision. Anyway, that, uh, is the opinion of the attorney.
So we can't charge them, uh, for a, a building permit either? We can't charge them for a building permit either?
Oh, yeah, we can. You know, we have the authority to issue building, building permits and our responsibility is to ensure that that building is constructed, uh, following building codes. It's not the town's responsibility to keep track of covenant requirements or what limitations a covenant may imply or, you know, uh, may have in place for the residents of that subdivision. As up to the subdivision's property owners and the contractor to enforce the covenants.
So the property owner can sue the man that's done the, done the job, or is that what you're saying? He can...
Well, if the, the community or the residents of the subdivision, uh, can, um... Basically, as I understand it, uh, their, their only recourse would be to sue him, uh, because he's violating the covenant. And...
So the owner of the, the ones that built the houses?
Yeah.
Can make him, you know, tear it down if he can, right? So what you're saying?
It, well, he can object to it, but I'm sure there's a legal process that they have to go through.
Because whoever built the houses didn't put the roofs on right to start with. All the roofs in that neighborhood, because mine, the roofers have been up there and said, this roof has not been done. Myrtle's roof has not been right. Sandy's roof has not been put on right. If you look at your roof, you can tell it's not put on right. And they just, if you get up there and step on the roof, the nails will come out from over. I mean, it just, and it just burned me up. That's their base speed.
That's a, that's a different thing, though, but the covenant is, uh, restrictions placed on the property owners. Like, uh, uh, you cannot park a mobile home on your lot and live in it.
That's not, do you have a...
You cannot put a, you can't put a, uh, satellite TV antenna on the front of the house. That's one of the covenants.
Homeowners' association, a homeowners' association, is that what y'all have?
No, uh, it's not, uh, there's not an association. But, uh, everyone that bought property in that subdivision signed the same covenant. And, uh, we, uh, we can, as a resident of that subdivision, step in and say, this is not in accordance with the covenant. And the covenant is put in place to try to preserve and protect property value.
Well, you can't see it when you drive down the street. You cannot, the only time you can see it is if you go down Smithville Road and you look and you can see it. And...
It's got a neat job to it.
It, it sure is. I see nothing wrong with it.
I don't, uh, yes.
I didn't sign a covenant when I bought my house.
If you look in the paperwork, there's a covenant.
It wasn't in my papers. You can hardly read it.
We never knew of it. We was, it was never mentioned. It was two, eight hours. A lot of people, when we bought ours, we were given one. Okay. But people that bought and moved in after us, they never got one.
Yeah, uh, I don't have my original paperwork because I refinanced. I didn't keep it, um, but, uh...
I never knew of it until Carol mentioned it to me one day.
Anyway, it's, it's not the town's responsibility, uh, and, you see, residents don't want to do anything about it. It is up to the builders. The builder can take him to court if he wishes to, yeah, but that's up to him. Uh, anyway, I just wanted to put that out, that it, town is not responsible.
But the, can the residents, can the residents disregard or just, uh, catch a little ordinance if they desire to?
If the ordinance, if the, um, residents form homeowners' association, they can establish their rules. And if they wish to do away with that particular covenant, then the residents, the resident, homeowners' association should be able to do so. And, uh, it just depends on what they want to do.
Well, it's got a lot of good points in it. Uh, like people not living in the sheds, people shed.
Yeah.
Uh, dogs not running loose. You know, there, it's, and there's a lot of good stuff in it, but, you know... But this about, when you can't even see the building, it's...
Man, well, like I said, it's, uh, the residents of the subdivision can do what they want. It's not the town's responsibilities, uh, and that's all I'm trying to say right now.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, well, just, uh, make that statement and proceed on the next item. Uh, that's all I had under new business, petitions, applications, complaints. We have none. All right, resolutions, ordinances, orders and other business. All right. Coming back to the, uh, little home ordinance from our work session. Uh, this had been through the attorney and, uh, no major changes to it from our work session. So I want to bring it back up to the council for consideration. Anybody have questions or comments on this? Did everybody get a copy of it?
Yeah, but I didn't bring mine tonight.
Okay.
I didn't get a copy of them, no one.
Oh, yeah, you can look that over. I will email everybody a copy of it.
Can you basically explain what it's? Because I don't have time to read all this.
It's, uh, well, it's, it's, uh, everything that we talked about at the work session. And what, everything that we decided on in the work session is in that document, um...
That, that's coming back from the logist office with the changes that we wanted, right?
Yeah.
And he was cool with the changes we made, right?
Yes, everything was good. All right, let me, let me find that quick. I do want to send that on to you. Uh, if you do not have a copy of it, you will have it.
Mr. Mayor, I tried to forward that, uh, these ordinances from my laptop to Eugene's. I couldn't get it to forward. Couldn't get, could not get his. I put them on an email to him and sent it to him and it never came through, did it?
All right. Have you been getting anything from me today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't, not today.
All right, I'll see. All right, where is it? We emailed everybody a copy of that ordinance or that, uh, the final copy of the mobile home ordinance. The highlights were that existing, uh, mobile home parks were grandfathered on the setbacks and all the paved road, et cetera. And the paved road requirements and setbacks, all the spacing was limited to new construction only. And did not, did not carry over, shut the mobile home, existing mobile home park be sold, still grandfathered in.
Okay, what about the age of the mobile homes?
There, I was, I'd have to look to find it in there, but there is a...
Under G.
Under G. Uh, yes, or is it, uh, unlawful for any person or owner to place a, or attempt to place any mobile home older than ten years old as, uh, determined by the mobile home HUD tag or HUD plate. In any mobile home or private, mobile home site in town, um. All right, it says, a waiver may be granted for mobile homes older than ten years old upon, upon successful completion of an inspection by a qualified mobile home manufacturer slash mobile home inspector.
So that means if the mobile home is in good shape, that it can be older than ten years?
It's gotta pass an inspection, but it can be older than ten years. As long as it, uh, passes, uh, the state of Alabama does have a, um, manufacturer slash mobile home inspection requirement for dealers to inspect homes where they can resell them. Uh, and that's basically the same thing we're requiring.
Okay.
So if it's, uh, in good shape, they can bring it in. But they have to have the inspection and present the inspection for, uh, to receive the waiver. And, uh, for that for just a second again. As far as, have we specifically addressed, um.
Well, I can tell you, there's one, um, uh, in the trailer park on Dean's Ferry where that last trailer burned. They got the big stuff up, but it's still a mess there and they put a, a camper in there. In the middle of the mess.
There you go, oh, all right, come back to that, okay. Just give me through here again, find, uh, what I'm looking for. All right, it's, uh, for part permits, application plans, mobile home, uh, construction. Uh, says, it shall be unlawful for any person to construct, maintain or operate any mobile home park within the town unless it holds a valid permit issued by the mayor upon approval of town council uh, in the name of such persons for this, uh, specific mobile home park. All capital, uh, applications of permits shall be made to the town council who shall cause to be issued a permit upon compliance by the applicant with provisions of this ordinance and of any other applicable legal requirement and upon written evidence of approval from the health department, uh, permit. Uh, mobile home parks are permitted only in zones, zone or district in which such use is provided in any ordinance of the county line, Alabama, as may be adopted from time to time. Mobile home park permits are non-transferable when the mobile home park is sold or changes ownership. The new owner will be required to submit an application for the mobile home park permit for the new owner. So there's no restrictions on that. There's no requirement to bring up to, uh, new construction standards if the property is sold. Okay. Do we need any more discussion on the permit? All right, do we want to, uh, bring it up for passage or?
Did you send us a copy of it? Did you say you emailed us a copy of it?
Yes.
Can we wait till next time and let me read it?
It's, uh, I hope everybody's in agreement with it. We can table it until the next, next meeting.
I like to table it too.
Okay.
Actually, this is for our town.
Yeah.
You know, it's not for us, it's for our town and we don't wanna hurt nobody. I would like Sue to see, see it, take, read it, read it over and look at it.
Okay. That's fine. We can do that, uh, and I, I did email it, so you should be getting it. Uh, on your laptop email account. All right, we'll table mobile home ordinance till next month. Okay. Uh, one of the things I emailed to everybody earlier today was a couple of examples of, uh, nuisance ordinance. Uh, I just wanted to introduce this for your consideration. Uh, we may need to also, when it comes down to putting one together, uh, we'll probably need to do another work session where that is the only thing we're going to address and I'll go by it. Uh, but I want everybody to have an opportunity to read it over and look at it, study it. Uh, so that at the next meeting, we can, uh, decide on how we wanna approach it. Uh, whether, whether you like one over the other or there's elements of both that, uh, you'd like to use, uh, so that's why I got two examples for us to consider. One of them's six pages long, one of them's fifteen. So, but the nuisance ordinance, uh, I guess, uh, one I just pulled up here is an ordinance to prevent certain vehicles, properties, weeds or other rubbish which is unsightly from becoming a public nuisance or safety and public health hazard or fire hazard within the town limits of county line. That's the title of that nuisance ordinance, uh. The other one, the ordinance is an ordinance defining nuisances, establishing a procedure for the abatement of nuisances and providing penalties or violations, uh, of its provisions. So, anyway. We'll, uh, address that at the next meeting. Happy you've had a chance to review it.
Is our email address in here the same as our, as we gave you, as our email address?
Uh, yes.
Different.
Everybody's got a, a, uh, new emailer. Yours is place, uh, three at mycountyline.org. It's on that piece of paper that was included there, uh. But each, uh, is place one, place two, three, four, five. And at mycountyline.org and clerk at mycountyline and then mayor at mycountyline. So, uh.
There should be an email on your laptop that, from the mail that shows all of that. I, I would suggest you print that out so you have that to be.
Or just save it into your, uh, address book.
Yeah, save it in your address book.
On there, so, uh, and yours, yours should be set up, your email should already be set up to be able to, uh, download the messages coming in. Yeah. All right, uh, let's see. All right, that was the, last thing I had on my agenda, um. Does the council have anything?
Question, did you, did you cover the zoning order?
Uh, I don't have any, I don't have a corrective zone, uh, zoning ordinance. Uh, we are gonna update our zoning ordinance, uh, but it's primarily, uh, to update words to the more, uh, the current usage, especially the trailer, the mobile home. Um, for example, it's just update some of the wording. But that'll be, uh, I'll try to get that ready for next month, too. All right, council, anything? Next.
Well, I got a call and, uh, talked to Mr. Mitchell, two of the light spec peaks are not out, we're looking at them out. Remember taken out because of what in our town limits. That's one on Dean's Ferry and one on Smithfield.
Uh, I just printed out, there's another printout in there of the streetlight inventory from back, uh, in the two thousand twelve. It listed several that had been retired, uh, some of those may have been those retired lights. Anyway, uh, this list actually shows the numbers of those. Uh, but there was quite a few that were, or re- retired.
We, they gotta come in and they gotta fix, uh, the one that's on Town Street, the one that's on, um, Calvert Street, Olive Green Acres and Olive Carr Brazil. There's three lights on Carr Brazil that's gotta be done.
Did they ever put a globe on yours?
All that, I left, uh, they made a note. I was with Alabama Power today, but they come fix that light or cut that limb off. So it don't break anymore.
Town Street, Carr Brazil.
Yeah, Ca- Calvert Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven holes in, uh, Carr Brazil Road and then Olive, uh, Green Acres. They still gotta come do that.
One on Calvert's.
Yeah, and it may be up to six weeks before they get it all done, cause they said they'd have to order more lights. It takes them six weeks to get them in, so.
Uh, well, that's a start.
Yeah.
All right, anything else from the council? Okay.
My wife said, thank y'all for the lights. It really helps. Also, when y'all leave and go to the four way, look left. You can't see nothing. Is it possible for us to get a light in that intersection?
At the four way?
At the four way.
Well, we have a light there, uh, on the old store, uh, store property corner. Uh, there's one there and there's one.
I'm talking about on the. East Ferry side. I don't know what, what the research is for having a light.
Well, it is, that, uh, that side of the four way is not county line.
It's not county line, okay. Cause a lot of people walk right there.
Yeah.
If you're not careful, you will hit somebody.
Yeah, that's Block County, right there. Uh, that's Block County from the four way stop to, uh, Malcolm's.
Okay.
And that's Cecil's Place. And it is, uh, county line goes across Dean's Ferry, includes all of Cecil's property and then comes back across the street. Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Could, could you get Steve to look into maybe on that, add a couple lights down there? Oh, it is really dark. I've got a lot across from me and I think I paid for it. And, uh, and then that bit this way back. And I know that's gonna be dark and that's kinda no man's land, but if we had some light there, at least it would help some. You know, we can't put it where the town's not. And I'd like to ask you respectively, that, you know, y'all doing all these ordinances, that you pass one that every house has to have a number on it. Because nine-one-one, you know, i- it's like a needle in a haystack. And passing that ordinance would take it all, me being the bad guy and the owners, you know, being the bad guy to make them put up numbers. I've done that in my park and I take them back. I don't want numbers. They, I would like to see an ordinance where every person has a number.
Every domicile has to have a number posted.
Yeah, they have to have it posted.
In the, uh, mobile home ordinance, uh, there is a requirement to put a directory at the entrance.
Well, also houses, half the houses don't have numbers.
Yeah, they need to have something on the street to identify them for it, nine-one-one.
A certain, you know, you can't write it with a magic marker.
A reflective, it needs to be a reflective film identification number.
I put them up many times, but they always wanna tuck them down. I don't want it, but it's, it's just, it's for their safety.
Yeah. Well, uh, we can look into that for sure, uh, for nine-one-one's safety, uh.
There's someone gonna get, they're gonna get right out of that on Dean's Ferry. It's on the matter of time.
Is there, are there any lights passed Dean's where Carr Brazil turns off?
Yeah, there's one and then my light. I think, then might be a.
Another ear light, the one that just crossed the street from the driveway, okay.
Cause I know Lori said that it's real dark down there too.
So I'm saying, when you, when you go through that intersection, it's pitch black. Even the intersection is, is pitch black right there.
Well, it's three lights up.
I know, but it's where they're at. There's none of them at the intersection. They're all away from the intersection.
Well, that's, that's the traffic. I mean, it starts about eight at night and it goes about daylight. I mean, you're hoping it. And, uh, they walk wherever it is. And the biggest thing I saw was a motorized bicycle the night and he had his cell phone as he walked out of there. So, I mean.
I mean, these help tremendous. I mean, they, they're bright.
Yeah.
They, it, it's really made a difference on how you can see. I can tell a big difference. I'm blind as a bat. I can see people walking now that I couldn't. And there's still some dark spots and we can't illuminate every dark spot. But that intersection, when you're coming up on it, just pay extra attention to that and just kinda look well and just see how, how it's pitch black right there.
And part of the problem there is the trees.
Let's turn on Dean's Ferry and this, and then go down just a few hundred yards and turn around and come back.
Oh, yes, yeah, I know, it's a tunnel down there, but it's, it's primarily the trees. And that's, uh, that's gonna be the problem with putting a light there at this four way, cause there's a big tree right there on the corner where the light would go.
Oh, that big up tree?
Yeah, and, uh, they're not gonna put a pole there with that tree there.
Who's property is that?
I don't know whose property that is.
The county, because that county's.
Yeah. Uh.
It's not the gentleman on the left right there, is it?
I don't know who owns that corner property.
I bet he, he would know if anybody was, he would.
Well, we've gone to, uh.
I think it's Air Park.
Tax Assessor's website, Block County Tax Assessor, and look at their map and find out who owns it. Who's paying the taxes on it.
Right.
Lot.
Mister Mayor, are you aware there's an app that you can get on your phone called Land Guide? And it costs nine, you can get it a week free, seven days free, and then it costs you nine ninety-nine a month. But my daughter got it when they were looking for land to build on and, um.
Yeah, it shows you all the information.
And it tells you, you just, the current, you just put it on that, over that property and it tells you who owns. Now, if it's sold recently, it's not gonna be updated probably, but at least it'll give you an idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's available, but, uh, I remember. Yeah, I mean, it's available, but I remember.
I've had it and I I know.
Uh, it's a, it's an expense that you don't need to have if you got access to the internet. You go to Block County Tax Assessor.
Get it on the tax assessor's.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can look at their maps. You have to know what oh, subsection number is to look in, but.
Have to know that on this because you can just scan.
I mean, it's it's free information.
Yeah.
Well, I told my wife, she, for y'all putting the lights up, every Saturday, one of y'all are dropping a car off and she's got a detailer. She's followed it so far, so I, I'm on teller. Steve's first Saturday, you're dropping your duly off. I won't keep playing it as long as you'll go with it.
We'll miss you.
You hope she does. Does she watch those playbacks? Okay, essentially, one last word on the streaming system. Once we get it up and going, it will be streaming live on YouTube and Facebook.
Oh, God, be it.
Good knowing y'all.
Anyway, it's, yeah, I've been experimenting with it. This particular system can broadcast on two different streams. And anyway, all right, that's all I have. Lucy, you got a copy of that ordinance to give soon?
I did, I did. Thank you.
All right.
I'm making motion to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. John seconded. Myrtle made the motion to adjourn. John seconded, all in favor. All right, motion carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.